Connecticut, he's the director of Lead Connecticut. And tonight I have my mentee with me. And he is the one that lead that program in the state of Connecticut with UConn. But in addition to that, he has spent many, many years using his talent and skill working with school board across the state of Connecticut, developing that relationship between board and superintendent, and helping board and superintendent maximize all their talents and their skill to make sure that we're moving in, schools are moving in the right direction. As I said before, he's well respected in the state of Connecticut. He's the person that we, everyone called to board and superintendent when they have issue for advice. And he's always very attuned with what is taking place at the legislative level, in Hartford, and at the district level. Welcome, Dr. Villanova.
Thank you.
And he's here tonight to present a workshop to the Board of Education regarding role, responsibility, and jurisdiction of the Board of Education and School. Madam Chair?
Thank you. And as you may know, there are a couple of us who are newer to the board, who, myself, Ilde Ray, and Suzie Torado, and then there are some very experienced board members here, and then some in the middle. So you have, you have the full array here, including Suzie, who's just joined. This is her second, or second meeting.
You're still smiling.
So I'm gonna hand it over to you.
Well, thank you. Very, very nice to be here, honored to be here with the Wyndham Board of Education. I'm a fan of your superintendent, you should know that. She's a star in the state, and it's very nice to be here to talk about shared and collaborative governance. I didn't meet you, John, Bob Villanova, but nice to meet you. So my hope today is just to get you to think about the work of superintendents and boards together, share some best practice, share some of the research a little bit. Most importantly, I guess you would talk together with me about what differentiates high-performing boards from other boards, perhaps. I know some of you have been through lighthouse training years ago, I think, perhaps. I know, Murphy, glad to see you. We've done that before. We're not gonna do that for sure, but I'm gonna try to provoke your thinking about what would allow you to keep on the trajectory that you're on. Because I was here in 2011 with my colleague Dean Schibels from UConn. We did a study for the commissioner of the Wyndham Public Schools. We looked at leadership and organizational capacity back in 2011. I think I interviewed 150 people in Wyndham, teachers, principals, citizens, et cetera, and wrote a report for the commissioner. This is back in 2011. And it was a bleak report in the sense that things were not going in a way, in terms of student performance, that the board hoped that it would, and the district hoped that it would. At that time, with Superintendent Ortiz, also a good friend of mine. I teach at UConn, she was one of our programs. So the history here has been, Pat Proctor's a good friend of mine, he was here years ago as superintendent. So I had a long history of Wyndham connections. And when the state appointed a special master here, I stayed in touch with Dr. Adamowski to watch how things unfolded during those times, which, knowing how Dr. Adamowski can drive a district, it was a challenging time for you, I know. And then I kinda lost track of Wyndham for a while. It kinda lost, went off my radar screen. But when Dr. Garcia got the position, I became very much interested again in how the district could begin to bend the trajectory for all children to do as best as they possibly can in the school district. And as you know, I want to reinforce the idea that, the notion that Wyndham's one of the places now that's known around the state, is an urban district on the move in the right direction. Good things happening for purposeful and planable reasons. It's not, it can't be random in an urban district, in any district, particularly in urban district. You have to have particular plans, you have to have a focus and a direction and a movement in a certain direction. I looked at the recommendations 2011, and almost every recommendation that was in the report that we wrote, you've moved on as a, as a school district and as a board and superintendent collaborative team. So I think you're, everybody is either getting better or getting worse, every school district, getting better or getting worse. You're on the better trajectory, you're getting better in terms of your children's performance. You should be proud of that. I think it's a great testament to hard work, committed teachers, committed principals, and a strong superintendent with support of the board and the community. As you know, you represent the community, you really can't develop, you know, great schools grow in great communities. Without strong community support for the schools, it's very difficult for the professional staff to move the ball forward and to make, to make children have all the potential and possibly as they can have. What I want to talk about tonight with you, I want to get you to talk to me a little bit about, is the foundation that the board puts in place to allow the professional staff to do the work in the community with your support that needs to be done. You're doing a lot of that now, I want to reinforce some of that, and perhaps get you to think about some new directions or additional directions that even, even make the progress be perhaps deeper, faster, and even more powerful. But I wanted to get your voices in the room first for a moment, get you to think for a moment about, about your work together. Everybody's been here for at least two months, it sounds like. You've been here two meetings, so you've, but I'd like you to just think for a moment, take a moment to reflect on something the board and superintendent have done, something you've done together over the past two, three, four months, relatively short time, that you think have helped move Wyndham in the right direction. Just take a moment and think about some specific thing that you've done collectively, not individually, that's helped make the district stronger, however you, however you define it. Take a minute and ask you to, anybody who wants to volunteer to share the, what's on your mind about that, just to get the ball rolling. Do you want to start with something, something you feel as though you've done as a board, superintendent partnership that moved things forward?
We've worked on the budget really well this year together.
Is it all of them?
It hasn't always been easy.
Yes.
But this year, we worked fairly well, I think fairly quickly together. We asked for a lot, but it was mostly given to us, and we moved it forward and presented it to the Board of Finance. We had a snowstorm that kind of threw a wrench in our plans, but that wasn't because of our relationship.
Sure. Fantastic. Thanks for sharing, Tracy, that's a good start. Something else you've done as a board in the last four, three, four months that made a difference?
I think in addition to, I'd like to associate myself with Tracy's comments, but also I think that the district as a, the board of ed and the superintendent actually had a pretty good interchange with the Board of Finance, too, which, you know, that's part of getting the budget moved forward.
Absolutely.
You know, it's one thing to develop the budget, the other to have a good back and forth with the Board of Finance.
And that happened. Fantastic. Anything else come to mind that might have affected teaching and learning positively? Budgets, or from the town, not from the finance board, good examples? Anything else come to mind?
Well, it seems to me that the biggest thing that we've accomplished is we've gotten the community to support renovation of this building, which was constructed 50 years ago, and apart from the roof, has not been touched really in 50 years.
Wow. No small feat.
Yeah.
Yeah.
A major effort to, to come together to, to propose the project and get it supported by the community.
Fantastic. Thousands of kids over time will be affected by that, over time. The conditions students are learning make a difference.
Not only took it six years.
Pardon?
It only took it six years.
Six years. That's not bad by some standards. Anything else come to mind?
I think as a newer member, I've, sitting here most of, well, just this year alone, and so far, we've only worked on the budget pretty much, mostly. Not only, but mostly. And it's amazing how some of these older, well, not older people, but just older members were seasoned, were seasoned members. The way that they, it, it just really made me proud to be on the board, to listen to you guys rattle off numbers, how, what it was last year, and how the budget was last year, and how we came together this year to get a budget similar to, you know, what they were talking about. But the way they rattled numbers off from experience, so I'm looking forward to that in a couple of years, being able to say, well, back in 2018, we did this and we did that. So that's, you know, I'm grateful to be here and to be, and it's an honor to be on the Board of Ed, it really is. And I read that in, in your writing, you know, how privileged, privileged, how much of a privilege it is, and I don't want to lose sight of that.
Great. Thanks for sharing that.
So, thank you.
Please, John.
Well, I think the most important thing is that this board supports Dr. Garcia, she's done a wonderful job. And I think that the, the board showing its strength of support for Dr. Garcia as our leader makes it so that you can't have a rift from teachers or other administrators come to certain members and say, you know, this is going on. If, if, if they perceive that we're total in support of Dr. Garcia, then it's going to be, no questions asked, this is what we're going to do, this is what we need to do. And instead of flubbing all over the place, there's, there's a direction, this is what you do, get it done. And that's how you're going to achieve going forward, it's like running a business. And if, if the CEO is questionable, then everybody's going to start ticking away at the question and going to cause nothing but problems and chaos. What we need to do is, we're a poor community, but without chaos, and with the leadership we have and the support that we have here, I think we're going, doing very well forward.
Thank you, Chair.
Can I say something?
Sure.
Can I say something? So I really want to thank Mr. French for his comment, I really appreciate it, thank you. It's really an honor to, to work here and to work with you. But something that we work on recently, we just started a one-to-one technology, instructional technology initiative in seventh, sixth, and ninth grade, and the board has been very, very supportive of moving that initiative forward next year. We started in January, and moving it next year to sixth and seventh, ninth and 10th. And they demonstrated that support, not only by supporting it in the board meeting, but also making sure that the financial support were also in the budget.
All the examples you shared, if you read even the readings in a cursory way, you know those are four of the essential things that boards do, high-performing boards. Support the, hire and support the superintendent, pass a budget that provides the resources needed to move the ball forward, and then make policies to support improving student achievement. We'll come back to those themes, but you identified them right off the bat. So let's end the workshop now and go home. You've already got that down. Those are really powerful. Let's just, let me, one more thing to get your mind into, into the game here would be, and I don't want you to be shy about this, every board's strength comes from the diversity of its members. You come to the board, elected by the public, with different backgrounds and different, different strengths and different reasons. Just take a moment, and if you would, be thinking about sharing, what's unique strength or characteristic do you bring to this board that adds to the board's strength? You personally, what are you bringing to the table every time you come to the board meeting? What do you represent, what do you, what strength do you bring, add to the board? Take a moment, think about that, because you have many of them, I'm sure, and I ask you to pick just one.
Does anybody want to start?
One strength you bring to the board?
I'll start, then.
Please.
Um, I would say, and John shares some of this, too. Having served on several other boards in the town, including the Board of Finance, I think helps with perspective in how the Board of Ed's work fits in with what the Board of Finance has to think about and what the town council thinks about. So that's not unique to me. But I also, because I lobby at the state level and understand the state budget well and that process, and the federal budget well, because of my federal experience, those, I think that's just one thing I bring.
Perfect. Thank you. That's a good start. Thanks for sharing to get us started. Somebody else tell us their strength, please.
When I joined the board, or I joined the board because of a strong desire to contribute, to see the district, the school district, to see an improvement, betterment of the quality of education in the district. And I think we've been working very hard at it. I think we've seen some improvement. And every time I come to these meetings, I think that's my main thing, my, you know, what is going to happen that is going to, you know, make a contribution to the improvement, improvement of the.
Okay. Dr. Gomez, can you put the microphone in so that I can't even hear you? I'm sure that.
Anybody recorded that? Let's play it back. Okay. Basically, working to contribute and working for the improvement of the school district.
Thank you, Detective.
You know, the education for every child, for everyone, and maybe one day we'll be proud of the district.
Well, it could be stronger than that. Other, other things you're bringing in as board members, individual board members. Please, Tracy.
I think when I joined the board, like Dr. Gomez, I think I bring a sense of community. I came from a parent's perspective, very active parent, involved in, you know, all the PTOs and all that kind of stuff, like Ms. Ray. But people would always come to me because I would go to the meetings and I would get the information, I would bring it back just as a citizen, and that's when I was asked to run. And I think I bring a sense of a parent's perspective and a community perspective, and I try to bring a nonpartisan perspective to the board and encourage people to leave politics at the door. I don't care where you come from or what you do, tell me how you feel about something coming up on the budget, or on, you know, one of our agendas and something like that. My husband hates to send me to the grocery store because it takes two hours, but, you know, I enjoy being that part of the community. I think that, I bring that back to this table. When I sit down, I bring a community perspective and a parent's perspective.
Thanks, Tracy. It was all important.
What's worse is if your husband's with you and stands around two hours.
He doesn't do that anymore. He doesn't do that anymore.
Other strengths you bring.
My wife can reflect on that very well.
Other strengths you bring in as individual board members? You all have many. I know you have a lot. What's one?
Well, just one. I think I could piggyback off of some of the other members I've spoke, but especially Tracy, because I myself, we're the only two members that have students in the schools right now. And we bring a parent, I bring, I also bring a parent's perspective, and I've, I'm a parent leader in the community, I like to think, and I've been called that. So that's what I bring here, a parent leader, and I've sat on several committees in the community, so I'm familiar with Wyndham Public Schools, and I've enjoyed working with the, with Wyndham Public Schools in different, in different avenues. And, and I love our students, and I want us to help them to achieve, to be the best we can, because we do have a bad reputation out there in Connecticut about, oh, Wyndham, your student is going to the high school?
Improvement quickly.
You know, so I am proud to be a part of that improvement, and I want to be the change I see in the school system.
Well stated. Thank you. As a new board member, what are you, you've got a lot of strengths, I can tell. What are you bringing to the board table as a strength that comes from your background or?
I think what I bring to the table is that I'm a very good listener, and I'm, I bring a certain connection to the community. Of course, I've been here 32 years, I've worked at Eastern Connecticut State University, so, and I used to work in the Department of Child and Family Center, where I've met a lot of families, so I've, I've been able to hear their concerns, and I'm able to relate to a lot of them as well. I am a former parent of two students, that graduated from Wyndham High School and went on to go to Eastern and graduate from Eastern. And I'm also gonna have a grandson coming into the Wyndham Public Schools pretty soon. He's going to Sweeney School. So I think I bring a sense of connection, and I'm a good listener, and a good observer, and I think that helps, because when it comes down to it, when people talk to you, you know where the problem is at.
Yes.
Like, they can tell you their problems, and you're able to assess what's going on and be able to relate to them and help them with the situation.
Thank you so much.
So I have a PhD in Business Administration, and my concentration as a doctoral student was in quantitative decision-making. And so I guess my, the strength that I bring is that I'm an evidence-based, you know, decision-maker. What does the research say? What, what has been shown to work? And so I tend to focus on, when I look at policies, not only what's being proposed, but whether this has been tried before and has it worked or not.
Such an important strength. And for people like you in particular, I like the characteristics article that I sent that you saw on Advance, because it does play right into the notion, this is not just somebody's theory out there, but it comes from actual observations and research on best practice. So appreciate that. John, anything that come to mind?
Well, like Lynn said, we bring a couple of different things to, you know, we're kind of, some people call us the retreads, because we jump from one board to another board when there's a, a need that, that happens. And, you know, I've been a businessman in this community for over forty years. And I brought to the table the Board of Finance at the time, when the town was really struggling finance-wise, and we turned that around. And in the last 10, 12 years, I had many people come up to me saying that the school system's failing, and this is where the community, I've been, we've got deep roots in this community. And decided that it was time to come on board, just as Dr. Adamowski came on. We got along all right, he sat right next to me. There were a couple of things he didn't like that we did, but we got through it. But yeah, it's, it's, it's bringing a need to bring respect to the community. The thing that I always heard, because, you know, a lot of blue collar people come to me and say, we're just throwing money down a hole.
Sure.
I almost like to stay at Connecticut. But, you know, what can we do about it? And, you know, well, you need to work with it. And that's why I decided to join on the Board of Ed at the time.
So the point of that, thank you all for sharing, but the point of that really is to emphasize the fact that there are strengths in your uniqueness, there are strengths in the, the unique qualities you bring to the board. On the other hand, there's also even more strength in your collective wisdom and capacity. So it's a combination of both, either of those extremes. If you acted simply as a uniform body, rubber stamping everything that came about me, that wouldn't show your strength and your, and your insights into what's happening. If you disagreed with everything you wanted, you did, that wouldn't move the community forward. So I think that, I wanted to surface that at the beginning, just to emphasize the fact that all of the best practice literature on boards and superintendents suggests that you have to recognize and appreciate your unique qualities and diversity, respect each other, listen as you, things you know. At the same time, realize that as an individual board member alone, you don't have any real authority or capacity, it only comes in your collective strength as a board. And I'll try to reinforce those themes today. So I appreciate the fact that you shared it without pulling teeth. I've, I've worked with a lot of boards around Connecticut in the last few years, and how am I gonna pull teeth to get people to say what their, what their unique qualities are? But you shared them right away, so I really appreciate that. I would say that, you know, I never really was interested in coming out and facilitating board conversations, but I ended up doing a lot of it now, I'm not sure why, but I enjoy, I am enjoying it. But I want, I want to emphasize the fact that, you know, when the elephants dance, the ants will all get crushed. So think about that for a moment. To some degree, the conditions for improving the performance of our children in Wyndham, or any place in Connecticut, or any place in the world, based on the fact that the policymakers, the elected officials, and the CEO have their act together in a, in a way that you can move towards a common set of goals, a common mission, a common vision, that's when the district begins to feel like, we've got support, we can do things, we're gonna work harder, we're gonna try, we're gonna do more for our children. When the board and superintendent are in disarray, and you, some of you can appreciate those days in different places, probably here as well, but when the board and superintendent are in real disarray, it's very difficult for the people doing the work every day to figure out, are they really with us? Can we get the support we need? Is the budget gonna pass? Does the community believe we're doing the right thing? So you've kind of turned that Titanic around, you've got that happening here now. People are starting to, based on your testimony a moment ago, buy into all that. So I want to acknowledge it and try to reinforce it in our time today. We won't go a minute past nine o'clock, is that, I just want to be sure I'm on the right, are we, are we right about that?
Yeah.
I just want to be sure. I use this PowerPoint, it's to keep me on track, because I tend to veer off now and then. I want you to make sure, if you want to veer off in a direction that will be helpful to the board, this is your time to talk, so don't hesitate to say more, redirect me. But the two goals I had coming in today, based on talking to your superintendent, is develop a shared understanding of the roles and responsibilities of a high effective, highly effective board. Not to tell you what you can't do, that's not my job to tell you what you can't do as a board, but I want to be here and try to highlight what high-performing boards do in urban schools, districts, rural, and suburban. There's a common set of things those boards do. And I also want to review and discuss the Board of Education members' roles and responsibilities, particularly, I, because there are some areas that if you put them on the table, particularly with people that are relatively new on the board, relatively new, you might have some areas you're wondering about. I'll try to clarify those and highlight them today together. That's the main thing. But to do that, I thought, I'm not gonna do all the questions, but I want to click and have you at least do, I did this part already. So I should just, I'm just gonna say, just so I, I have a little bit of credibility, because I was superintendent for a long time. Our board, I had many boards I worked with over 17 years as superintendent, and I felt that what made my work effective in the district I was in was the respect we had for each other, even when boards turned over. Every time we had a board member, three or, two or three members turn over, we had to rebuild, rebuild the commitment, rebuild each other's relationships. It was important to keep on doing that. It wasn't a one shot, even though I stayed in one place for 22 years, we rebuilt the infrastructure on governance every two to three years, whenever a board member was turned over. Because you can't take it for granted, I'm sorry, I forgot your first name.
Suzanne.
Suzanne, and?
Ilde.
Ilde. We can't take it for granted, Suzanne and Ilde, for example, could walk in and pick up everybody else left off. We've gotta begin to kind of rebuild a little bit and get you on board, and have the language be right, and the acronyms we use be right, et cetera. So you're in the process right now. But I thought to start, if you don't mind starting with this, take one of these, pass it along. I'm gonna ask you to just take a moment, we're gonna type these up after, you're not gonna put your name on these, these are just for, sometimes I start with these three questions, but I don't want to spend all the time on these three questions, but I do think that the second question there is a really critical question. I'm gonna ask you to take a quiet moment and think about it. What will it take for the Wyndham Board of Education superintendent team to create the conditions necessary for the continuous improvement of the Wyndham Public Schools? Continuous improvement. You can only write one, you can only write one thing down. Try to be as specific as you possibly can. What will it take for you to create the conditions for continuous improvement, however you define that? Then I'm gonna collect them and read them back to you without your names on them.
So that's number one.
No, it's number two.
Two is number one.
The second one.
You want us to answer number two?
Look, just answer the second one.
Okay.
Don't skip the first one and the third one, just do the second one. This is not, this, there's not gonna be any grades on this, just want you to put something down that'll be meaningful to you. What will it take to move the district forward?
Yeah. Sorry about that interruption. My son took my card and had to go out, so.
So sometimes, these little ideas are worth looking at six months from now. I'm gonna read them to you now, but I suggest that Dr. Garcia has them typed up. And then, when you're trying to do an informal dipstick, and how are we doing, sometimes it's not bad to read these back and see in six months, how are we doing on these things we think are important? So I suspect none of these are gonna surprise, surprise you, but let's just see what you wrote down. What would it take to create the conditions for continuous improvement of the school district? Close the culture gap between the most, mostly Hispanic, low-income student population and the almost entirely Anglo-middle-class staff. So critical. What will it take to get more support from the community? So critical. You know, I always tell, I teach superintendents at UConn, that's my job to prepare superintendents, and I try to remind everybody in all the classes that we work in the community schools. These aren't our schools, they're the community schools. So occasionally, superintendents, not yours, but other superintendents, for example, occasionally get into a district and believe that those are their schools, and this damn community won't support us. No, no, these are the community schools. We've gotta earn their support, build their support, and develop trust and confidence in the school system. So this is a powerful idea. What'll it take? Trust and nonpartisan cooperation. So-so critical. So, so critical. What will it take? Be respectful of anyone's ideas, treat everyone, everyone with respect. Critical, anybody, but certainly a body where you're going to expect differences of opinion. You expect that around this table, differences of opinion. It's respecting each other, listening through them, and finding common ground towards a commitment you're all making together, which we'll talk more about that. What will it take? Focus on providing appropriate support to achieve district goals and diligence to review and adjust as needed. So important. And holding your superintendent accountable for the movement towards those goals. That's so critical. I know that Dr. Garcia expects that. I said to our Board every, every two years during my annual evaluation, if we're not making progress towards the goals that we identified together, find a different superintendent. That's just, I told that Board, I meant that with our Board all the time. I went home to my wife every two years during my evaluation. If the Board doesn't think we're making progress towards our goals, the Board's and the superintendent's goals with the community, we've got to pack up and move somewhere else. So that's critical. I'm saying you've got that as a belief already. Teacher, teacher, what will it take? Teachers feeling valued, being honest with them, becoming a team from the top to the bottom. My first slide in a moment is going to reinforce that. Couldn't agree more with that. You can't lead a school system by simply demanding more. For every ounce of responsibility, accountability, you have to have two ounces of capacity building. So one ounce of accountability requires two ounces of capacity building. That's every organization's formula for success. It's the magic sauce. If you just, you put a third, a new math program in, you pass out the books and demand people teach it in a different way, and just demand it without capacity and how to do it, you shouldn't be surprised that it doesn't go anywhere and it fails. So every ounce of accountability requires two ounces of capacity building. And the last one, what will it take? Working closely with community and educators to access the needs of students, of students' areas of improvement and so forth. So important. It's listening to the voices of the community, and that's what, you're the voices of the community right here. You represent the communities that you're, you're here to serve. You know, you couldn't, you couldn't come up with a more comprehensive group of conditions than you have right here. So I hope that you'll get these typed up together. Think, think about these in the future, and hopefully we'll highlight some of these today. I'm going to just walk through a couple of slides. You've got them in front of you, I think, anyway? And I think the public can see them from the screen anyway, so I'm going to highlight a couple of them, just to try to make the point before we see a short video clip. So this, if you can see this, either on the screen or in your packet.
I don't see it.
Is a, I think you had, you should have the PowerPoint maybe somewhere, if not?
No.
And I'll just describe.
It was emailed to us.
It was emailed, yeah.
The PowerPoint?
Yeah.
It's okay, I can just tell you what's out there. You haven't got to read it. The symbolism here is more important than the specific things. This little bowtie here, do I have a red thing on this, I wonder? No? So this little bowtie is intended, the superintendent's in the Middle East. And this has to do with the comment about support for teachers and professional staff. The reason that superintendents oftentimes can't succeed in working in a school district is because they spend too time, too much time and energy on one side or the other of this bowtie. Now, I'll say what I mean by that. So on the left-hand side of this bowtie, you see the community and the Board of Education in the middle part of the blue. You can't see that, but that's, that's what's there. If superintendents spent all their time working with the governance team, working on shared governance goals, working with the Board of Education, and not attending to the needs of the professional side of the school, of the school district, the principal, the teachers, to support their needed, then they, you can't improve performance of teaching and learning because you're focusing only on the policy work with the Board. On the other hand, if you're a superintendent that only focuses on the teaching and learning part, the right-hand side, the principals, the teachers, et cetera, and you forget the Board and the community, you find out you don't exist, you lose your job pretty quickly. So if you trace the superintendents, and, oh, that I've known over the years in Connecticut, that lose their jobs, it's because they spend too much time on either side in the extreme. The monkey in the middle symbolism here is that your superintendent, Dr. Garcia, is known as someone who is a community engager, works with your Board effectively, at the same time has a strong professional staff that she's working with and leading to keep the thing balanced. The box at the bottom is the most important box, and you can't see it. The intent here is, at the bottom, that every single child in the school district gets the very best conditions set for their learning as possible. And that happens when both sides of the bowtie are led by a strong superintendent who believes in bottom-up and top-down leadership, from the Board and from the teaching staff themselves. So, comment on that, anybody want to push back on that? This is why, this is the most important, in my mind, Allison can disagree because she's in the class now back there, but in my mind of the whole program I teach at UConn, this is the most important slide. Because this is where I see most superintendents uncomfortable on one side of this or the other. And you should know, one of the real hopes that we had when we were in Wyndham was you could find a superintendent who had some experience. Because the Board's side is the scary side for new superintendents. They many times have come from principalships, or have come from other positions, but they haven't worked with the community or Board. Luckily, you found a superintendent who's been on both sides of the bowtie, working effectively, and that's part of the magic you're working on together here. I'm going to refer also to my comments on this idea of a shared governance team, and in my mind, that's the Board and the Superintendent. It doesn't mean that principals and everybody else isn't important, it simply means, in terms of the policy work, accept the conditions, it's this group right here that's the most powerful and important. So that's what this slide's intended to highlight. Any comment, or? Makes sense to everybody, probably, I hope?
Mm-hmm.
So you got three credits for that. So you got three credits in the graduate school.
Am I done now?
It's pretty obvious to look at the slide and see that that's correct. Implementing it is the tricky part.
It's the tricky part.
It's, it wasn't by accident that we hired a superintendent.
I'm sure.
That had been a superintendent, had been successful as a superintendent. Because knowing where that balance point is, is, I don't think that's intuitively obvious.
No, no.
And I don't think, you know, it's one of those things that, you know, the old saying about when you're up to your armpits in alligators, it's hard to remember that your objective was to drain the swamp, you know? So superintendent gets pulled in one direction or the other, and it's hard to remember that you're supposed to be doing the other thing.
One thing I, I have the good fortune of every month, my colleague and I meet with all the new Connecticut superintendents that are brand-new, behind closed doors once a month after they're appointed. Boy, the stories we hear. You know, because the door closes, and they're able to then talk about things they don't, they haven't experienced yet. If you're brand-new to it, the board work is the high-wire work. So it can be done. There are many talented superintendents that can pull it off, even when they're brand-new. It's harder to do it in an urban, complex district with multiple constituencies, multiple stakeholders, multiple demands, it's just harder to do. It's not impossible, harder, but hiring an experienced superintendent makes that probability much better. Please.
I would, I mean, I, I have a relative who's a superintendent, so I hear a lot from him. But you get pulled back and forth, I mean, there are times during the course of any year that you spend, I would think, more time in one sector than the other. Can you give any constructive advice to Board members about how to help facilitate the superintendent keeping that balance?
Such an important question. I think the best, so for example, today, and one of your neighboring superintendents, who will be unnamed, mentioned to me that she spent a lot of time in the past two months working on a redistricting building plan. And I was reminding her that that means you probably spent two months on that side of the bowtie. She's invested two months of energy and time, every single night, most days, talking to the community and to the Board about rebuilding plan. If I, my advice to her today was, get on the right-hand side, be in schools the next three weeks, visit classrooms, have principal workshops, do things that like, make sure the professional staff knows you're still with them and leading them. That's one thing. But my Board did for me over the years, and I always appreciated the fact they did it, was, now and then, somebody on the Board, not always the Board chair, somebody would raise their hand and say, "You know, you've just asked Bob to do two additional studies. I'm not sure, given the things on his plate, that it's good for us to have him do that right now." I'd stay quiet, have a little, I'd be clapping on the inside. But it helped me very often to have that happen. Sometime after, after three or four long budget meetings, the Board chair would call me and say, "You know, I think that probably Friday wouldn't be a bad day for you to think about taking a vacation day or something." It was a way to remind me now and then, that I had to go back to the well and rebuild now and then. All kidding aside, it really needed, that was something that the Board, Boards I know that do that, keep superintendents longer, just aware of the workload, because the workload is significant, obviously, and it, we're not complaining, I'm simply saying that if a Board's aware of that, for example, our Board had a commitment to communicating with the public as much as they could, through newsletters, webinars, many, many things. And eventually, I said to the Board, "My full-time job could be public relations, the way you're pushing me and encouraging me to do it. I understand what you're doing, but it could be my full-time job." So they ended up putting some money in the budget for me to have some resource for that. Not a lot, never enough, but at least I had some help for that. I had someone help, added my newsletter. I had somebody else sit with me and do a couple of things that allowed me to be, so it's a balancing act. It's practical advice, it's being aware of it, really. And also having a superintendent, you don't have a shy superintendent. You don't have a shy superintendent. And I think it's important that the superintendent can also share that with the Board now and then. I don't mean in a difficult way, but for example.
Articulate.
Articulate that when there's some, "I just need some time to do this because I can't do that until I do this." I think that's, the give and take on that is just so important. I think, I think any executive in a position, a CEO position, has to be able to do that with their Board to survive, because there's so many demands.
Thank you.
I have to say.
Please.
I believe that that's why the relationship with Dr. Garcia, the Board, and the community, and the schools work well together. Because she is in the schools, I see it myself. She's in the schools, she comes here, she came here sick, practically with no voice to present her budget. That's how dedicated she is, and that's why it works, and that's why we have so much strength in our Board.
Couldn't read more.
And in the schools and the community.
Couldn't read more. This slide, you can't see it in detail, but I just say, these eight characteristics are what we try to train every superintendent that goes through our UConn program to be able to come out and be able to do. We say to Boards of Education, every single superintendent that goes through our program should be able to have skills and characteristics in these eight areas. And as you can see, I highlighted the middle one, demonstrates leadership that take advantage of collaborative governance. That's a critical attribute of any superintendent. They have to be able to be appreciative and skillful at developing collaborative governance. That means the Board and the Superintendent, building consensus, working through conflict, identifying direction without becoming so black and white that every decision has to be yes or no. That's really a critical skill that we have to try to teach. One thing that makes it easier for us to teach it now is the availability of YouTube videotapes of Board meetings. So for example, tonight, this Board meeting, your, my colleague here told me this Board meeting is going to be telecast live. So if it goes well, I could have my class watch this meeting next week.
Of course.
We were, we were trying to, jury's still out on that.
As long as you, like, blank our faces out.
But all kidding aside, and trying to work with our superintendent group about two months ago, as Allison knows, the Harper Superintendent, Leslie Radicares Torres, made a presentation to the community, two, three hundred people in the room, on how she was proposing, after much community engagement, to redistrict the whole district. It was a beautiful thing to watch. Everybody in the class watched that, and they became more informed on the complexity of presenting a complex plan to a community. So that's a critical part of superintendent preparation. What I, what I did here, I tried to distill from two things you read. The eight characteristics article is a Board article. In other words, it was developed by the association that supports and understands Board work. It also incorporated the superintendent literature on high-performing districts, the superintendent attributes. And what always strikes me, when I listen, so you look at the bottom, the left-hand side is done by a Board Association, the right-hand side is done by researchers who look at superintendent behavior most of the time. And what strikes me, and hopefully you would be, the overlap is pretty dramatic. In other words, what do strong Boards do? They engage in goal-setting and monitoring progress. They use data to identify student needs and justify decisions. They demonstrate interest and knowledge in the school district, they know about the school district. And they crafted a working relationship with the superintendent based on the joint commitment. The joint commitment is in your vision, mission, and goals, and you have that in place. I was so impressed by, Pat, what did you call that, I saw online last night, what's the document that?
The state of the school?
State of the School document. So there's a clear example. If you were trying to come to Wyndham to be a principal, or a teacher, or anything else, and you read that, you would know that the district has goals, focus, mission, we got a direction we're trying to go. Such an important part of it.
A theory of action.
Theory of action, please. You have one of those on there, too?
We have, yeah, yeah.
You'll look at that more closely, it's so important to have. Not many, not many Boards have that. We're going to have a video about that in a moment.
No, the state of the schools thing, I would say, as a, somebody who wasn't on the Board when I was first invited to that, and going to that for a couple of years, and then going to the last one that I went to, and seeing the cross-section of stakeholders is a very helpful thing. Because it does articulate what the, what the goals and what the progress have been.
So important.
And we've had several remarks from Board of Fin, the Board of Finance Chair, and other members of that key Board say how helpful that was to them, to see that.
So important. Lays it right out there, and to some degree, that's, that's your shared commitment, you being the governance team. That what was written in that report is what reflects your shared commitment. On the right-hand side here, what do strong superintendents do? They establish learning-focused goals, same thing the Boards do. They establish non-negotiable goals on instruction and achievement. We know that Dr. Garcia has those in place with your support. They work with the Board to align resources. So critical in your budget process. I think that if the community doesn't trust that the money is being spent the right way, to John's earlier point, they're reluctant to send any more money towards the school district. They have to be convinced that the money is going to things that'll make a difference in children's lives. They can be convinced of that. There's a high correlation, as I watched through the state. The superintendents and Boards that have community confidence kind of flowing, their budgets generally get passed. Maybe not in the first time through, but they generally get passed. When there's discord between the community, the Board, and the superintendent, oftentimes the community won't pass a budget, because they're just worried that the money's going to places that wouldn't, wouldn't help student learning. So that's my, my wise guy comment about when elephants dance, ants die. To some degree, the budgets get passed, the finance Boards look for your collective wisdom with your superintendent on whether or not this investment's going to actually result in a return in terms of student learning and student, student better lives. So this list is important, it's to look at at your leisure. This comes from a really interesting study. This gentleman went around the country and, and looked at Boards, rural, suburban, and urban, that had a performance of high, high-achieving student, student outcomes, and tried to figure out what it was about those Boards, governance teams, superintendent Boards that made a difference. None of these are profound, but in my mind, they're the holy grail of superintendent-Board relations. Team members, that's the governance team, that's you and the superintendent, are united in their commitment to the service of children. You can disagree on the methods, on the resources, on many things, but the common bond is a commitment to the service of children, all children. Indicators the Board and Superintendent have interdependent relationship. I think that's not stressed enough oftentimes. You're interdependent. It'd be very difficult to have a high-performing Board and a lousy superintendent, or vice versa. They're interdependent. The work of the superintendent is facilitated or hindered based on Board interaction with the superintendent. You either get in the way of the work, or you help facilitate and lead the work as a governance team together, one or the other. Indicators of success are established for the district, so important here. I mean, every time that, many mornings, Dr. Garcia will call me on the phone on the way to work at eight o'clock and give me an update on the performance of the Wyndham children, because she's so proud. I don't, I'm not particularly paying attention early in the morning usually, because I'm not, I'm not up anymore. But, but when Dr. Garcia, all kidding aside, you and your superintendent are keeping track of progress. It's not simply hopes and dreams. It's tracking the progress to know that you're making a difference in the lives of children. It's so important. It builds the efficacy of your faculty and of you as the Board. If you came to these beings every, every month, and for all the time you put in as Board members, and didn't think you were making a difference, it would be very difficult to keep Board members here.
You know, the difficulty there is, is that we get a lot of information about what's going on with the children in the schools, different subjects, different levels, so... But I, I think that indicators of success from a community perspective is a controversial topic. And as Ms. Ray pointed out earlier, there is perception in the community that doesn't necessarily correlate with the reality of what's going on in the schools. And it's particularly difficult in this community because we have a group of students who struggle, and a group of students who are less likely to, to run into difficulty. And if you mix those two together, you get an average that doesn't, doesn't really indicate what's actually going on. And the newspapers tend to lump everybody into one big pot-
Right.
And, and region inference that's not a correct picture of what's actually happening in the district. And I'm not so sure that we have really figured out how to describe and communicate the reality of what's going on in the schools in a way that the community really appreciates what's happening here.
That's not for tonight's work, but I couldn't agree more, Murphy, that that is critical to be able to, so right now, the, the accountability index that the state uses, the indicators, that's not, for an alliance district like yours, those are the coin of the realm in terms of how the larger world views progress or not. But then, on top of that, over time, you're going to develop other indicators that are important to your community. So for example, for some reason, our community, which was more suburban than, than Wyndham was, the board wanted to keep track of how many kids took more than two, more than one word language before they left the high school. They wanted to have that tracked over time. They wanted to know how many students were in the performance groups for music over time. In addition to all the things, SAT scores and other indicators. So we ended up, over time, having about 37 key indicators, we being the governance team, the board and I together developed these 37 indicators. Some of them were surprising, they weren't things that most people would want to count, but our community wanted to know certain things, and we started to measure those things. We ended up building strong community support, so I went to the Rotary Club every year and gave the state of the schools address. I'd show them not just the literacy test scores, because that's so important to us, but I wanted to show them the percentage of kids who were going to the top-tier college, all these different measures they wanted to know.
Yeah.
So I couldn't agree more, it's hard, if you lump them all together, it's hard to tell who you're serving.
Well, I in fact would describe the state's mishmash of, of things as a set of statistics that obscure more than they reveal.
Coming from a data man, I understand, I can understand that. But they're, they're, at least they're a common foundation. In other words, it's very difficult to compare apples to apples in a complex thing like state assessment, without some common indicators.
And, and, yes, and everybody wants to know on those, are you going up, down, or sideways? And even then, because now that, now they've basically got 12 components to the, they get an aggregate number, which is somehow derived out of 12 pieces, and, and it's not even clear how they get the aggregate number out of those 12 pieces. And the 12 pieces aren't all going in the same direction.
But if you drill, I couldn't agree, but if you, more, but if you drill down, like we were at a school today, your superintendent and I, observing a school together, and the principal of that school used really important indicators to show this group of superintendents how she was tracking progress. They were understandable, they differentiated in many different ways. I think we're getting better and better at that because the data's more accessible, but I agree, it could be improved.
I think the superintendent's state of the schools is one example of how we can-
How to communicate.
How we can unpack some of that stuff, so that people understand what's really happening. But I think when people look at the newspaper and all they see is the aggregates towards the state, that they, like I said, I think it obscures more than it reveals.
And the last two governance relationships are based on trust and respect and-
We're building that.
Well, as all of you know from other relations, not just the board relations, but home relationships and community relationships, it ebbs and flows based on circumstances. So a couple of bad exchanges in a public meeting makes the trust and respect ebb for a while. You've got to be aware of that and find a way to, to let it flow back again. I mean, it's just like any relationship, it's so, so critically important. The worst that can happen is, it just stays and festers. You've got to find a way to appreciate the ebb and flow, and then move it, move the flow in a positive direction. And the way it moves positive is appealing to your common commitment of what's best for children. You all know that. But that's the, that's what gets people over the hump of the difficult times, is realizing there's going to be squabbles, there's going to be disagreements. But if we can stay focused on the big picture of commitments to all children learning in, in meaningful ways, that gets you through some of the difficult times. And it's just, it's an important job for, for the governance team to have that. And then the last one occasionally gets left off, the governance team continuously develops strong and durable relationships with the community. I won't say a lot about it here, but I will say that 2011, I interviewed, as I said, 120 people in Wyndham. You couldn't have found less trust from the community, from the, from the officials we interviewed, who were elected officials from other bodies. It was just shocking to, to those who were here. We wrote that in our report, not because they're trying to be critical, because we were just kind of surprised by that. The fact that you're getting positive reports now on things have kind of changed in that regard, that's really important stuff in the right direction. But that's so important, you can't disconnect from the community, and I know that's one of Dr. Garcia's major goals, of being out in the community and engaging people in the work. And you've got a, you've got a board that's committed to that, you can already tell, we'll talk more about that. So I want to, I wanted to say a couple of things about Bloomfield, because I'm going to show you a short video clip, I hope it won't, it won't put you off, but I've used this now with a bunch of boards. So Bloomfield Public Schools has a unique, the unique circumstances where, in many ways, they were one of the really poor performing districts six or seven years ago. They had a strong superintendent, they had a lot of resources, but things were just stalled. The high school was ranked as one of the bottom five in the state. A lot of things were happening in Bloomfield that made it a place that people were saying, let's not go to that school district. And I said that in front of the Bloomfield board, they would acknowledge that's, that's the case. So they went out and hired a superintendent, Dr. James Thompson, who's like your superintendent, experienced, savvy, community-based superintendent. And they went out and the board chair came in, who's a longtime Bloomfield person. And they've worked on collaborative governance now in a very purposeful way, with outside support and their own leadership. In my mind there, and if you follow the data about school performance, Bloomfield is one of the places where they have really bent the trajectory dramatically. High school's ranked as one of the top high schools, the achievement of literacy and mathematics has gone, and it's not just based on chance or only hard work of individuals working separately, it's based on collaborative governance and other things. So I went over there, I was going to do a workshop for one of, one of your superintendent's mentees, Michael Conner, who's now superintendent in, in, you know, Michael, so he's now superintendent in Middletown. And I was working with him, he and his board the first month they were together. And I wanted to have James Thompson and his board chair talk about shared governance with the Middletown board. They were going to be out of town, so I did a short interview, 17-minute interview, I want to show it to you, ask you to react to it a bit. And they're going to talk, they're not boasting, they're simply talking about how they pulled off in Bloomfield this strong collaborative governance that resulted in high performance. So if we could just crank that up. I forgot, your, your first name is?
Brendan.
Brendan, thank you very much. We'll, we'll have a conversation after about what you think about this.
Dr. Thompson, big smile.
So good morning.
They won the board award.
Thanks for doing this.
Can you turn it up? Thanks, Brendan.
The board of education.
The board award.
I really wanted to hear the Bloomfield story, and unfortunately, Mr. Harris is in Washington DC that weekend, and so we're trying to do this instead. The Middletown Board Ed is coming together as a new board, new board chair, new superintendent, Dr. Michael Conner, who I know you know, Dr. Thompson. And I thought it would be good to have them here, a little snapshot of how, through the hard work of the professionals here and the cooperative parents, you've transformed Bloomfield Public Schools into a high-performing urban district. That's kind of just, just a, I know you're both humble, so I want to say a couple of things I've asked about, about the Bloomfield that I've seen over time. 2011, I know Dr. Thompson came around in 2011.
That's when I came, April of 2011.
I have been watching the Bloomfield schools for many, many years as an interested outsider, and I know at that time, Bloomfield schools had proceeded to be not as strong as they could be, with lots, lots of significant issues. You came in with the charge and proved the schools. I know that at the time, I think from what I remember, Mr. Harris, you were deputy, deputy mayor around then? You were already active in the community around that time?
I was at the end of my term as deputy mayor, yes.
End of your term, came to the Board of Education, thankfully, became the Board of Education Chair, had a history with Dr. Thompson, prior to this professional association, so that helped for sure. But as I've tried to say to many boards of education over the years, the real work happens out in the schools and the classrooms, we all know that, that's where the real work happens. But the context and the conditions to make good things happen for children and teachers and principals emanates from a foundation of collaborative governance with the board and the superintendent. That's where the foundation is. So hoping today to have you talk a bit about, a bit about the way you transform the public schools here in Bloomfield, knowing full well, you don't want to take the full credit for that, it's the people out in the school who do the work, but you set the context for that. Bloomfield is, high school, I recognize this year, is in the top 10% of all Connecticut high schools.
That's correct.
Remarkable achievement. High school graduation rates from 2011 have improved from 74% graduation rate to 91% last, I saw on your website, which is fantastic. You know that the State Department of Education in Lead, Connecticut, identified Bloomfield as one of the districts that has the remarkable degree of coherence and capacity as a model for the district, we're using Bloomfield as a model in many places around the state. And I believe from afar, that three factors have driven this, and I'll stop at what you talked about there. But the three factors from outside looking in, it seemed to me to be the drivers, are collaborative and positive governance, stability and education leadership at the top, with the board chair and the superintendent. And then, under-valued attribute that I see happening in Bloomfield over the years recently has been strong, authentic stakeholder engagement. The community feels like these are their schools, they're part of their schools, and you engage them in your work together. They've been the drivers. So how on earth did you make all this stuff happen? So why don't we open up by, by asking you both to comment informally on, what did you do at the beginning to work out your relationship as a board chair and superintendent to create the conditions to let these things happen? Open comments on that. Maybe Mr. Harris, you start here, Mike.
Okay. I think it's important that everybody understand my roots, and my roots are that I spent 39 years in Bloomfield school system as a teacher, an administrator, and in fact, I ended my career in '06 as the principal of Bloomfield High School. So do I know the system? Yes, I know the system well. I knew from its beginnings, and, and then I know where we had come to. I retired and I decided I'm going to take a year off and to kind of figure out what I'm going to do with my life. And a year later, I'm in politics. And you're right, I became deputy mayor right off the bat, and I served two terms. And then I was approached by the town leaders and asked if I would agree to run for the Board of Ed. The Board of Ed at that time was in a little chaotic position. There were people going their own separate ways. They were getting ready to bring in a new superintendent, and although I didn't directly take a part in hiring of Dr. Thompson, I had a very definite part in it, because he and I met and talked for a year prior to him coming here. And that's a story that not a lot of people know. You know, it's, I grew up in Hartford, Dr. Thompson grew up in Hartford, he and I knew each other, we knew each other as educators, so that to me, I thought if he's possibly coming in here as the next superintendent, it's important for him to know the town. And so every two weeks, we would get together, have breakfast, and do some more talking.
Have built a foundation.
And we did that for a year, not under, not realizing I was going to come to the board, because I'm sitting at the time as the deputy mayor.
Sure.
That's kind of my story, how I got to where I am, and I'm now in my seventh year as the chair of the Board of Ed.
You've become a regional leader as well, you've been the president of CADE, you've been the chair of the CADE board?
Well, not, not quite, no. I'm, I've been the chair of CREG.
Okay.
I have served in that position. I am currently the first vice president of CADE, and in two years, I am scheduled to be-
One step from the wrong, yeah.
Yeah, I'm a one step from the wrong, yeah.
That's a great start, Mr. Harris, and as-
As well as, I do sit on the stakeboard, I was appointed by governor last March, so-
Congratulations, that's quite nice.
I have a seat there as well, so.
Thank you. Dr. Thompson, I go back, more than we want to say probably, he's a good friend and colleague, and maybe you could say a few things. I also should mention that Dr. Thompson's a 2017 Superintendent of the Year, he doesn't wear that on his vest for sure, but it's certainly something to be proud of. Maybe you can say a bit about your start here, and what got off, what got the board superintendent up to a good start here in Bloomfield back in 2011?
I think what Don has already shared, really laid the foundation around ongoing communication, which is so critical. And the other aspect of, which is so important, between the, a positive partnership between the superintendent and the board chair is trust. And the third, I think, is a willingness to commit to ongoing professional development via retreats and also workshops. One of the things that occurred after I started, and Don came on shortly thereafter as board chair, is we committed to a ongoing scheduled meetings, where we would talk through. And one of the things that the two of us early on agreed to, no surprises. Also, we had a very clear understanding of the roles and responsibilities of the board, board chair, and the superintendent.
How'd you share those with the board? How did the board start to buy those? You two came in with that, or developed that quickly? How'd you help board members also appreciate that?
Going back to, going back to, we had a retreat shortly after Don came on board as the new chair, we had a retreat of, I think it was two months later, it was the beginning of, of January. And that was critical, that the full board understood their roles and responsibilities. And you know, it's, it's nothing complicated, because number one, the role of the board really has three responsibilities. That is to hire and also to evaluate the superintendent. The second one is to adopt the budget. And the third is really, is to develop policies. Those are the three roles of the board. And the three roles of the superintendent really is to serve as a CEO. The second one is to carry out those policies. And the third is to really implement the, and monitor the ongoing operation and management day-to-day of the school system.
That so often doesn't happen, that's a great summary. Why, how'd you make that happen? Because a lot of places that doesn't happen. You just said it's so simple and clear.
Right.
Why doesn't it happen?
Well, the thing about it is, you have to, the other part too, is staying in your lane. Okay, I want to underscore that, and Don can talk more about that. It sounds like a very simple concept, but it is so critical that the board understand its roles and responsibilities, commit, stay with those roles and responsibilities, and the superintendent. Having said that, okay, it's important that the superintendent and the board carry on a very positive partnership. And there's so much at stake relative to improving student achievement. And that's really, at the end of the day, this is why the partnership, a positive partnership is so important. And when you venture out of your lane, then a whole set of problems and other challenges come about.
Who's responsible for keeping people in their lanes, in your, in your view? The board chair, superintendent, how do you keep people in their lanes positively?
Basically, I, I view that as my responsibility, more so than, than Dr. Thompson. You know, in my other life, I am also chair of the deacon board in my church. And my job as a deacon is to uphold the arms of the pastor, keep him out of harm's way so that he can run the church. And it's the very same thing dealing with the school district. You know, our job as a board is to be a support, to uphold the arms of the superintendent so he can run the system. Our job as a board is to make policy. His job is to administer that policy and to run the system. I tell people all the time, you know, we have one employee, and that's the superintendent. We don't have, we're not employing the principals, the assistant principals, the assistant superintendent, that's his job.
Was that hard to establish?
Of course it is.
The way back to the beginning?
Of course it is. Because, because you have, you have people who run for the Board of Ed, that they're going to take over and they're going to make the system a big, a great system. And, you know, nobody knows that more than I do. I've spent 39 years in the system. I know as much about education- I know as much about education as Dr. Thompson does. But I recognize my job is the board chair. My job is to stay in my lane. My job is to help him whatever he needs to do his job, okay? Yes, we have a retreat. People, the board members basically bought into what we presented in that retreat. But I still have to do a lot of one-on-ones with board members.
Does that continue? Now, six, seven years in, does that still continue?
It's ongoing. We have an annual, we have a retreat every year, but we have also, we have onboard workshops in which we address these issues.
You and the board, superintendent of the board?
Exactly.
Other people on board, yes, often, and mostly superintendent of the board and most governing teams.
And also, the superintendent of the board and also the leadership team.
Your teams together sometimes.
And sometimes we're with all the building principals, you know.
You've got a powerful theory of action on the website, I noticed. You don't see very many Board of Education theories of action. I'm a big advocate of those. Can you say a few words about that?
Sure.
Because it's a prominent part of your website, which is really well-known.
I will start, I'll let Don continue. The theory of action, the intent is to support the working superintendent and the executive team. Also, it complements and is supportive of the district theory of action. And you're right, we adopted, the board adopted, formally adopted the theory of action in 2014. And it is rare that you see that the board has its own distinct theory of action. And we find that theory of action, the board theory of action, is extremely supportive and impactful.
That's an important action. I'm going to refer the Middletown colleagues to the website, it's really well-developed. Everything on there about Bloomfield is really straightforward and comprehensive. One of the things that usually I hear from superintendent, board chair teams is the communications critical. I'm curious, how do you, how do the two of you figure out what the board needs to know and doesn't need to know? How do you, that seems to be a tension point for many boards and superintendents. I mean, too much information, not enough information. How did you work that out early on?
Well, I'll start, I'll let Don. We have our, we have the traditional structures in which we utilize for communication with our regular board meetings, the also, which is once a month. And we have, once a month, we have our committee meetings. There are three distinct committees. In addition to that, which Murray alluded to, is a vehicle for communication, will be the retreats as well as workshops.
Are there three committees? Are there policy?
Policy, we have finance, and also we have curriculum. Those are the three distinct committees. Then we have informal communication vehicles relative, Don and I communicate daily, okay?
I'm wondering about that.
Yes, and part of that is.
Multiple times.
Exactly. And going back to something that I said, that Don and I agreed upon early on, no surprises. There's always times that I feel that I need to keep the board chair informed about issues, about events.
And then, does the board chair inform the board? That's the way it typically works?
He makes that decision, okay? Whether or not it's something that he needs to inform the rest of the board or something that he needs to know himself, okay? But, and also, on the other hand, he will inform me about things that I need to know. So there's no surprises on my end. I mean, Don is very much involved in the town and the politics of the town, and so many different other aspects of the town. So, there's a lot of things that come, you know, across his desk, what have you, that he feels time to time I should be aware of. So this ongoing communication that really.
Communication between James, the town manager, you know, they communicate. If the mayor has issues, we do not have a strong mayor in Bloomfield. We have a town manager. If the mayor needs communication, she does that with me. She does not bypass me to go through the superintendent.
That's important.
That's a, a holding the arm, being that.
How do you see how it's that? That doesn't always work that way.
Well, she is Don is the one who mitigates, okay? That, that very, very important aspect of the communication. And here again, staying in your lane not only applies to the board members and also the superintendent and executive team, it also applies to the town council and also the mayor. And Don can talk more about that.
Let me ask you about the, my experience as superintendent is that there are times board members, for example, decide they want to be in the schools a lot, and they want to talk to principals a lot, to be aware of what's going on in the system. How do you comment, what's your comment on that? Is that out of your lane, or is that part of the, part of the deal for, how do you see that with board members? Not so much the board chair?
No, I have made it very clear to board members. I mean, they need to be involved. They need to, they give an open invitation to every school event, be it elementary, middle, or high school. Like last night, we had a high school concert, a winter concert. So there were several board members that weren't intended for that. Every so often, a board member would like to go in and, and just to sit down, meet with the principal, and may even want to sit in the class, which is fine. They let me know that this is what they want to do, and I tell them to work it out with the, with the principal. But, you know, they know that they're not going in and evaluating, giving opinions. They're going in because they want to see firsthand what goes on. But, again, that's that communication. So, they know. You know, I actively recruit our board members. I actively recruit them. And when I know there's going to be an opening, especially if it's on my party side, I go hunting. So, you know, I, I, don't tell me you can't find board members, because they are out there. And I have a good relationship with the other party chair. And we put people on the board who wants to serve and serve on behalf of the kids, because the bottom line is, it's our kids. And it's not about them, it's not about them making a name for themselves or being in the forefront of the newspaper.
Well, it's community capacity is such an important part.
Got to be.
But I want to be appreciative of your time. Let me ask a kind of final question.
Sure.
This is a new board, new superintendent coming in, new board chair in Middletown. Any words of advice on how not to put, you're put in the bear trap in the early days? Some suggestions or advice on, to the board's members and to the superintendent on what they might want to avoid or be cautious about in these early days in their first six months together?
Let me just begin by saying something that they have already admitted to is a retreat. I trust and understand that one of the agenda items would be defining roles and responsibilities. And a true commitment to staying in your lane. That would be my recommendation to not only get an off to a good start, but also maintain not only just a good relationship, but also, I think it would allow the board to achieve its, number one, its vision, its goals, and mission.
Good, great question. Thank you.
And just echo James's comment, again, staying in the lane is critical. As you know, I'm doing some consulting work with another board. And oftentimes, at least once, sometimes twice, sometimes three times a week, on the phone with that board chair. And, you know, if I see something in the newspaper, and I, I give that person a call, "How you doing?" And, "And are you getting out of your lane?" Those are the first thing I'm going to say to them. And that board and that superintendent relationship has improved immensely as a result of that. But I would just offer myself, because we're all in this for service to our children of our district, please give the board, board chair, superintendent my card. And, you know, I'd be glad to talk to anybody at any time. And I'm just a little sorry I couldn't be down there with you, but I am in DC working on behalf of the children of the state of Connecticut, working on behalf of Cave at the advocacy.
Thank you very much. Well, I really appreciate your time. You seem closing that, I've been around about forty years, as James has, watching education senior in Connecticut, being active and involved in it. There are very few areas, there are very few districts that have been able to transform from a place perceived to be on the way down to a place the community is proud of, the children are flourishing. And I give you great compliments as an outsider, that you made it happen in a way that's concrete, that people can follow the lead that Bloomfield takes, that they'd like to. And I know you're both humble, but you should be very proud of what you've done. I appreciate your time today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So let's just take a minute and turn to somebody you're sitting next to and talk a moment about staying in your lane. You know what? That's the main theme here, staying in your lane. It's easier said than done, because you run for the board for multiple reasons. So just take a couple of minutes and chat a bit about what.
Let me ask you a question.
Please, yes.
What kind of, what's the makeup of the Bloomfield community? I mean, what, what are they?
Very diverse. More and more diverse all the time. So I think that they shared, it wasn't on the tape, but I think it's right now forty-five to fifty-five percent free reduced lunch. They've got a high percentage of African-American children and an increasing percentage of ELL.
English learners.
They have a small percentage of that. ELL is very small.
Small.
Very small, yeah. But high percentage, high percent African-American, the minority are African-Americans too. And the free and reduced lunch is increasing.
Seventy-four percent.
Seventy-four.
So staying in your lane. So let's talk a bit about that for a minute. Now, I want to say a few things about that, because, you know, I sent you the document about roles and responsibilities from Cave and Caps. It's boring reading, but it's very clearly put together. So rather than having you read it together here tonight, I want to have some examples we'll talk about together. But one way to launch that is to have you talk a bit about what does staying in your lane mean to you? So just take a minute and talk together about, do you buy that? Is it something you want to talk more about, push back on? To each other first. Turn to somebody. Staying in your lane.
Okay. Why don't we just?
Yeah, just talk to somebody you sit next to.
I guess you three should.
So what's your view?
Yeah, just talk a bit about staying, what does staying in your lane mean to you?
What does staying in your lane mean?
Just among each other.
Yeah, just among each other for a minute.
I just want to.
I don't know what you're listening to.
I've been around for a while.
I joined them.
Dr. Garcia, why don't you join them?
Stay in your lane.
I think it means not to get into, like, what they said, that if she manages what we're not supposed to be doing. A lot of people, let me tell you, she's a good example. My daughter, me, thinks that. I think having played your father.
That was a major pressure. It was six, eight years ago, when previous boards then actually micromanaged the whole system. And they basically was hired, hired everything, and the principals.
I think that's when Mr. Bill and I ever came through before, was when.
Why can't you?
Different leadership. And he was coming in and doing.
I mean, your board.
And that's when we started micromanaging. That study just said that the board was over micromanaging.
So I guess, you know, I always have to be reminded by.
Bring it back to your perspective, that's the CEO.
That's not my role.
And policies, you make sure that the policies are being implemented, and you find out what policies need to be done. Based on actual, things are happening. But you don't get into the fact that, you know, we had a couple of issues where Dr. Garcia hired someone, had a room discussing. And it, that's a case where you feel comfortable discussing, you use my advice, but you will be responsible on the failure here or.
Climb, get better.
And that's how you, if you don't have any trust in them, then you don't have a way to win. You're going to let them do the job they're given.
You know, the students.
Let's talk to each other a little bit about that. Let's talk to each other. What are you talking about? So, let me just say this, that.
We're talking about Villanova's win in the NCAA.
Yeah, that was a couple of years in a row. You know, you all know that probably in your board workshops or superintendent preparation, we pretend that there's a very bright line between policy and administration. And the board does policy, and the superintendent does administration. The more trust and respect is in a place on a governance team, the more that line can be grayer and be flexible now and then. But I want to hear, so staying in your lane can sound like, many boards don't like that. I showed this film, the home board, they don't like the concept at all. I'm curious how that sounded to you? Are you, are you put off by that? Do you think it makes sense? What do you think about that? Because it makes a big difference if you, how you see your role. Please talk.
Well, it's difficult to make decisions about policy if you don't understand what the implications of policy are. And that means that you do have to have some knowledge of what's actually going on in the environment that you're making policy for.
Absolutely.
But what I got, Tracy and I have been on the board for almost eight and a half years.
Yeah, in our ninth year.
And my understanding was, a little bit different, is if, if I want to go talk to a principal, I feel like I need Dr. Garcia to know that I want to go talk to a principal and what I want to talk to the principal about. I don't want to talk to any member of her staff without her knowing that I'm talking to a member and why.
Otherwise, you're out of your lane.
But it's certainly sometimes necessary to, to find out what's going on and go have conversations with people.
Comments on, we'll build on that, please.
That's exactly what he said was what I was just thinking also, because being a parent and a parent on the board is so different. Because as a parent, I used to just go to the principal or go to the teacher and knock on the door and talk to them, you know, about whatever, mostly about my child. But now, I have to stay in my lane. That's different now. I have to ask the superintendent, the principal for permission. I can't just go and talk. That's my lane.
We'll talk more, we'll talk more about that. And permission is probably the strong word.
Yeah, permission, it's not permission now.
But there's, this has got to do with trust and respect. We'll talk more about that. That's a good example. Ask a lot of people first, yes.
I just, I just have a response to that, because I think that if you're a parent with a child in the school, you have a legitimate reason to be talking to the teachers and staff in the school. And you shouldn't, permission would not be the thing. I think what you need to do is you need to be aware of the fact that when you are a parent and a board member, sometimes people will think that a conversation they're having with you is going to lead to something different because you are a board member now. And I think it's, it's, you have to really be aware of when somebody is interacting with you as a parent and, you know, about your child or something you're active in in the school, and when they might be wanting some reaction out of the Board of Ed because you are now on the Board of Ed, and they think that talking to you about this is going to get something else.
Well, put, hold the cameras on there.
You might have something to say about that.
Yeah, when Ida first got on the board, we had a thing with a, an action item that was going on within the building that we knew about because we had students here that other board members may not have even been aware of. And she said, "I'm going to write an email." And I'm like, "You have to start that email with, 'I am writing to you as a parent of blah, 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 blah.'" Because especially, and you can't use your district email, you have to use your personal email for personal things. I've often let Dr. Garcia know, she was here and my daughter was here too, you know, "I'm going into the building and I'm going to talk to the principal about blah, 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 that pertain to my child," just to give her a heads up, because there were times when she would get a phone call, especially when I was chair, "Tracy's walking around the high school." Well, Tracy's walking around the high school because she's going to see the band teacher, or, you know, Gabrielle was sick and needs catch-up work or something like that. So there were different reasons, but I've always tried to give her a heads up. Even sometimes it's after, like, "Hey, I was by the high school today and I went into the guidance office because," or something like that. I think she can say that I've always been courteous about that, letting her know when I'm in the building. So the rumor doesn't get back, because especially in a town like Wyndham, one little grain starts a rumor that has absolutely nothing. But I've often told staff, you know, "I'll see them when I'm out," or something like that, or "They'll come to me," and especially if they live in town, they vote for me. I listen to them, and then I say, "Okay, you have to go back to your union, I can't help you with this, but this is where I think you should go." And I kind of, it's like a hockey goalie, sometimes you kick them back to where they need to be and redirect them, but not let them know that you're not listening to them. I've never walked into any building and said, "You need to," because that's, that's out of my lane, that's going out of my lane. But I've always either. But I've always either CC'd Dr. Garcia on an email if I had a concern or a problem so nobody could say. And my daughter, my daughter had an incident with a different superintendent when she was at the middle school. A teacher was non-renewed and came up to my daughter and said, who the bleep does your mother think she is? And I'd never even met this teacher, but because I was on the Board of Ed, Gabrielle was the person they could lash out at. So, you know, there's lanes. And then I went to that superintendent and it wasn't Dr. Garcia and said, this happened with Gabrielle, I'm not addressing it, you need to address it.
So there's special sensitivity when you have children in the school system.
Right.
About your responsibilities and your, but you never let your parenting be overshadowed by your board rule. In other words, what comes first is your parenting rule.
My kids are always going to come first.
But then you're going to separate it out so they don't, to Lynn's point, it can get messy. So you've got to be careful about that. But let's take something more, so parents that are board members, unique set of challenges. So that's what goes on saying.
But it makes it more difficult, I think, to know where your lane is when you're a parent and a board member.
Yes, definitely is. So let's say this, let's just say typical out-of-your-lane conversation, let's just say at your budget presentation, your superintendent recommends that they take out of the budget the, the money in the budget for the girls' basketball uniforms, we can't afford this year. And the superintendent recommends that at a formal board meeting. And you decide the next day to go to see the athletic director and the high school principal and ask, what, what do you think about the superintendent's recommendation about the girls' basketball uniforms? Is that, is that in your lane or out of your lane?
Out of your lane.
It's out of your lane. But there are boards and superintendents who operate that way on a regular basis. They don't get very far. There's usually conflict right now. But that's the kind of out-of-the-lane behavior. So let's take another, let's take an example of your, you're in the grocery store and someone comes up to you and starts talking about a teacher who they feel is really not meeting standards, incompetent. And you listen to that person for a while. Are you in your lane or out of your lane? You're listening, you're being polite.
I'm in my lane.
So how do you, how do you protect yourself from then engaging in the evaluation conversation when you know someday you may have to sit as a, as a jury for that person? How do you disconnect from that conversation? What's an example? What do you say to that parent? You can't, you can't evaluate professional staff because you someday may have to sit in judgment of their renewal.
But all you can say is thank you for your opinion.
I say thank you. I say, have you spoken to the teacher? Have you spoken to the principal or the vice principal? And if they say they've spoken to those, then I say, well, then maybe it's time to go to office hours with Dr. Garcia or something like that because that's not something I can help.
That's getting you back in your lane.
Yeah, that's kicking it back. That's the goalie thing I talk about.
And it may be that, it may be that you end up calling Dr. Garcia and saying, I got this conversation.
Right, absolutely.
This is coming your way.
That's how, that helps. Let's say that there is a, you have a strong interest in an environmental issue, some environmental issue that you know about because you're a community member and come across some issue to do with unsafe water in one of the elementary schools. And you decide to go to talk to the water department and say, we'd like, I'm a board member, I'd like to have you check on the water at my, at one of our schools.
That's out of your lane.
Out of your lane.
Way out of your lane.
How would you address that? What would you do instead?
Talk to the superintendent.
Dr. Garcia said there's this issue.
It gets to be repetitive, but you, you wouldn't believe when things start to go wrong. Let's just say, pretend for a moment. It's not going to happen here. But pretend that you begin to lose confidence in your superintendent. You begin to think maybe Dr. Garcia is not attending to the things needed to be attended to. Then inevitably what starts to happen is you start creeping out of your lanes. Board members start to, it's almost inevitable. So you've got a now and then check. So we, I think a good practice is about every, twice or three times a year, I would make an evaluation executive session with our board chair. The board chair, I would decide that. We'd have an inform, not my final evaluation, but even in January and sometimes even in October, we'd have an executive session and my evaluation, but the primary conversation topic was how are we doing with each other in terms of staying in our lanes? Both ways, you and with me. I'd be able to say to the board now and then, you know, on these three occasions, I didn't, I didn't like the way things went. I didn't talk about it at the time, but these three things kind of made me uncomfortable. And you could say to the board, to the superintendent, and by the way, that's how I felt about that. I mean, it kept, it kept, because, you know, natural tendency for all of us, I'm sure Dr. He's the same, Dr. Garcia's the same way, you begin to just ignore the things you don't want to hear. So you might hear a drumbeat out there, but you don't really hear it until something brings it to your attention. So I'd encourage you to think about a staying in your lane conversation informally a couple of times a year. Doesn't take long to do that, but you could cover a lot of ground by, and that keeps your communication honest, it keeps the, it keeps the board understanding how other people feel about how things are going. It doesn't have to be as elaborate as some people would make you think. It hasn't got to be a long process. Our board and I did that frequently for thirty minutes, twice a year. Not an hour and a half, not four hours, but thirty minutes. And I'd drive home in my car and usually be mad, you know, bend the steering wheel back for me. But it was, it was an essential thing to do. It kept us communicating clearly. And then if I, and it was a board member, oftentimes would happen, probably happens here as well, sometimes the board chair would recommend that I call up Tracy. Bob, you know, at that meeting last night, I don't think Tracy left clearly understanding what she were, what we were all talking about. I recommend as board chair, maybe you want to call Tracy, why I pick up because like every communicator, next to my phone, I used to keep a little checklist with all the board members' names on it, nine board members' names. And inevitably, every month, I'd look at my little checklist and the ones that I was comfortable talking to, I had a lot of checks by their name.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The ones I was uncomfortable talking to, I didn't have many checks. So the checks allowed me to be sure, if I hadn't talked to Lynn in two or three weeks, I found a way to make it happen. I might call, I might send an email because I wanted to be sure I had some way to spread the, spread it around. So the staying in your lane, I'm happy, nobody has a pushback on that because, how about the typical example staying in your lane would be, tell me the process, I really don't know what you're, tell me the process of how do you hire your administrators here?
You did an evaluation, you said in 2011. You may recall that we had some serious difficulty with, with that.
With board members micromanaging the superintendent.
And, well, the whole district. The, and hiring...
I was trying to be subtle, Murphy.
Specifically, Tracy and I were on the board when there was an opportunity to hire a principal for the high school. The superintendent had the, had a couple of finalists in and the, and the board voted on which one to hire.
Yeah.
Which turned out to not be the person that the superintendent wanted to recommend.
And she left a couple of months later.
Well, the superintendent was leaving anyway.
The hire didn't turn out so well either, so...
Yes, I, I know. We would have, well, it's arguably, we would have been better off leaving the decision to the superintendent rather than having the board get in the middle of it. It, it was, it should not have been done that way. I felt uncomfortable with it at the time, but you, but you and I were both relatively new on the board. We'd never seen this before. We didn't really know how to react.
Well, I think there's a lot of tradition and many, I'd say half the boards in Connecticut still require the superintendent to bring in two or three candidates to be reviewed. That's not best practice. That's usually the fallback and the superintendent gains confidence and trust of the board. He or she brings one candidate in. The board hasn't got to, hasn't got to approve that candidate. You could always say no. And I always felt that if our board said no to a couple of candidates I brought forward over, then I started to worry about my job. I started to think we're, we're not communicating clearly anymore. But I, they always knew that I'd rather have them say no to the one I recommend than bring two in and pick the one that's, I couldn't work with because they're the team. So that, so you're, as you know, you're holding your superintendent responsible for the leaders that are here and teachers that are here. And if there's an issue with them, you're going to, you're going to bring it to the superintendent. But that's also oftentimes an out-of-my-lane example where the board feels, because of the community pressure or maybe the history, that they should have a lot of say in who the administrators are. And that's a typical out-of-your-lane example, even though people won't talk me about it oftentimes.
But I think it all depends also how you frame that, you know, because sometimes board members can help superintendents, you know, with certain issues. They can see, they can see something that maybe the superintendent doesn't see. And then we can just warn, maybe look into this, look into that, and then that, it's just, you know, collaboration. So it's not, you don't have to frame it up, you know. It's the board saying this to the superintendent. It's just the board collaborating with the superintendent. Because there may be members of the board that know a lot about, a lot of things in those certain areas.
I couldn't agree more. I couldn't agree more with that. As a matter of fact, you probably do this, but in many, many high-performing districts, every advisor, search advisory, we always called them, let's say, principal search advisory, underline five times, committee. So the committee would know they aren't picking, they're advising, recommending the superintendent. I always wanted a board member on those, on those committees so they could talk to the rest of the board on what they, what they saw. Because there were times when, when the, the person that I wanted as superintendent didn't rise to the top on the committee and the board member would be able to say to his or her colleagues, here's what happened in committee, here's how the things played out. I'd make a recommendation in executive session to the board after the process ended, I recommend Mr. Smith for the position. And the board member would be able to say, here's some reservations I might have about that. Or I completely endorsed that recommendation and here's what went well on the committee. That's the way you keep the, the board's voice informed and involved so they aren't just rubber-stamping a recommendation.
Right.
Couldn't, I couldn't agree more.
Can I just, here, we, we don't have them on the committee, but we do let them, I do invite them to meet the three or two finals candidate. And so they can give me their feedback a week prior to that. But I only recommend one, and you're totally right. Superintendent C. One-O-One is that you only bring one candidate to the board and they can turn it down or not. But I do, after an incident where I did not come out, so I guess made the right decision, I do let the board invite, there's a meet and greet for them to meet the candidate and they can see the resume and they can, the finalist, and they can tell me what they think before I bring a recommendation.
And address Jamie's point, some insights and some new things. Absolutely, couldn't agree more with that.
Except I think our position is, is that we want an opportunity to tell the superintendent what we think. But, but it is not up to us to decide who to hire. It's up to the superintendent to decide who to hire. We can, we can tell her that, that we have an opinion about and, and in some, in some cases, we might even say, this might not be the best option, but she's still free to hire whoever she chooses to hire.
And in a trusting relationship, the superintendent will know that the reservation is expressed, should be, has to be addressed over time. In other words, it may be that, that reservation was expressed, which is your right to do. Superintendent's going to call you every month perhaps and say, let me give you an update on how Mr. Smith is doing. Or you're going to hear things in the community about Mr. Smith and you'll call the superintendent. That communication channel is still important, but getting your reservation out on the table is part of your right as a board member. You want to muzzle that. So I think that's one of the, the staying in your lane adage there is, can be overinterpreted to mean this rigid staying in your lane. The communication has to flow and be comfortable and professional. And, and there needs to be some gray area now and otherwise it becomes just too stilted. I think that you want to have an opportunity where you can talk together as a team because this whole conversation is emphasizing the fact that you are the governance team, not alone as a board member versus the superintendent. Other examples of staying in, I want to be sure that particularly our due of board members, anything that you're wondering about in terms of, you know, I, I put in there, you know, the CAVE-CAS document identifies, well, if you went to a CAVE workshop, you'll have those things all played out in great detail. But I think it's a pretty good list. There's two tapes in there that I sent you. The list of superintendent's responsibilities, board's responsibilities, and the shared responsibilities. I think it's a pretty good list. Really kind of, not, not many people push back on that list.
Yeah, the question, maybe related to the lanes, something, how much are the board supposed to know? There have been times in which we've been told, you cannot know about that because it's confidential, because it's something. What, how does it work? How much is the superintendent supposed to tell us or not to tell us? You know, she cannot talk about it.
So the criteria on that...
I'm not clear.
That's an important question. The criteria on what you can and can't know has to do with your role as a judicial official because in circumstances, residency, residency controversies, staff evaluations, expulsions, there are four or five legal matters.
Grievances.
Grievances. There are four or five legal matters where if you're involved in the conversation before you sit in judgment, you bias your judgmental ability and you could have to accuse yourself. Other than that, in most circumstances, it's not personnel, not grievance, you are able to know a lot about everything. Matter of fact, that's one of the characteristics of a high-performing board. They know a lot about everything. So someone's, let's just say you're putting in a dual-language school together. You want to be able to be in the baseball field or the soccer field and talk about it. Somebody asks you, hey, what's, why are you doing dual-language here? You want to be able to be informed about that. There's nothing worse, I don't think, from what I hear from my friends that are board members, than being asked about an important topic and looking like you don't know about. That's embarrassing for all of you. So I, I, I try not to tell the, the, the inspiring superintendents, but, you know, I think I probably spend thirty percent of my time informing the board about things. Way more time than people think because an informed board is an, an active board is an informed board. So you can't be an informed board without highly engagement in reading material, in conversation, what's going on. And if you're a, particularly if you're a parent in the school system, where you're going to run into parents all the time, you have to know a lot about the things that board is deciding together as, as a group so you can not be defensive and feel like you're, you're informed about the board, which is a burden. I think, that's why I think it's hard to get people, I tip my hat to all of you, it's hard to serve on a board because there's a lot of responsibility and it's hard to find people that want to do that because you're carrying a heavy load for the community. And most people, as you well know, are not that appreciative of it, unfortunately. I wish they weren't, hope they're more so, but I'm not sure that it's acknowledged that the work you put in and the responsibility you have.
Thank you.
I want to end, I want to end in a few, we have about twenty minutes left. I want to do one thing, just as a, just as a, as a way to kind of close, prompt your thinking. This is a, we're not going to actually do this, except I want you to look at it for a moment. This comes right out of the article you wrote. If you read the article on the eight characteristics in the school system, we were, this is a full-day workshop that occasionally I do and we, we had fun with this, but I'd like you to take a look at this. It's the summary of the article.
Thank you.
And I want you to look down the, and we're not going to collect these obviously, but let's just say we had a couple more hours. I would have you do this individually, but I put a big chart up with, with all your check marks on it, how people saw these. And we do it, we do it now and I'd ask you to do it again in your own, a year from now and see how you're making progress. I am confident these, have two sides to this. These eight attributes, in fact, define high-performing board. These eight attributes impact the fine high-performing board. So in April 25, 2018, not to be shared, but just to look at it and we'll talk about it. Fill this out for a couple of five minutes now. Put a check. Look at it. Put a check for yourself, and we'll talk about it before we close tonight, on where you think this board is right now on each one of those eight. On the left is just emerging, and the right is already well-established. Yeah.
How do you define the governance team in this situation?
Governance team is...
Superintendent, superintendent, and the board.
And the superintendent, okay, that's what... Okay, thanks.
Dr. Villanueva, do you have... Did this PowerPoint get to the district?
Yeah.
Can we get a copy of it? It wasn't included in our packet. I read the packet, and I thought, and then I looked up at that bowtie side.
Did it even send it out?
No, and it wasn't a part of that packet.
No, no. I printed out everything that we got in there.
Okay, I will let her know what that is. She's sent it out.
Yeah, I read everything. I'm like, oh, yeah, we got it. And then I looked up that bowtie thing, and I went, no, we did not get that. So can we get that, please?
Yeah, tomorrow morning, first thing in the morning. Make sure you got it.
For some reason, you don't have it. Just let me know.
Yeah. Well, you sent it to her. This is when you sent it to her, yeah. I'll make sure she sends it to me.
Yeah, I kept looking and looking. I was like, okay, I don't know, can't find it.
No, that bowtie graphic would be nice to have.
I'll make sure she sends it tomorrow morning.
Are you collecting these?
No. What I think you should do with an after, after a long gone...
Yeah, that's always at the end of the...
Put a date on them and a year later, we should look at them like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think sometimes, I think sometimes we're worried about self-criticism or evaluation. This is simply a dipstick, not intended to be heavy-duty overlay, intended to find out how you think about together, how your work is going. So what I recommend to boards is they do this perhaps in homeroom maybe, but don't spend hours on it. Just kind of check through based on what you're feeling now. Then let time pass, maybe three months, maybe six months, maybe a year. Bring it back out again. Because what you're hoping is, obviously, it's pretty obvious, you're hoping to move from left to right. And there are boards I work with, and we have a lot of time, I had a big poster here with the same thing on it, I have you put your checkmarks on different colors where you wore on them. And what you find sometimes is that board members might take the first one, which is effective school board's mission to envision clear goals, and the same board. Some people have checks on the far left, some have checks on the far right. That's a gray area, talk about that. If you're not together and clear on whether you have goals envisioned or not, you better talk about that. So it's a way simply to get the board talking about your real work together, you and the superintendent, because you're caught up, over the course of the years, you know, you're swamped with other things, other important business, everything, from contracts to negotiations to all kinds of presentations and responsibilities. I'd say a couple of times, usually it's worth best if you do it at the end of the year, June or something, retreat or something, and simply as a conversation starter. So you fill them out, you portray them together, and you talk about how you could move from left to right, or what's getting in the way. Oftentimes, Alaska boards would make a list in small groups about what are the things we're doing as a team, superintendent and board, that would help us move left to right? Or the things we're doing as a team that are blocking us from going left to right? Because like anybody trying to make improvements, you want to own the responsibility to go from... If you blame the community or blame the lack of funds, it just is a depressing spiral downward. So you've got to figure out, what are we doing as a governance team to make the place move from left to right, which hopefully in the end, it goes without saying, like they have here, is a big target out here that would say, this is the lives and the learning of all of our children. If all these things move from left to right, there's a higher probability, based on research and best practice, that our students will get the benefit from our professional staff if we as a board, superintendent, governance team are helping move from to that direction. So we covered a lot in a short amount of time. I maybe I'll close by saying that the... In a perfect world, I mean, I think that blowfield is the extreme, because they've only turned up for a long time, they've been working together. Their board meetings are one hour, and their committee meetings are the half-hour before the board. I think it's almost too efficient. But I think that what I emphasize here is that as board members, you're... The more you're working together to understand each other better, you're going to hire and support the superintendent, you know, identify very focused improvement goals, and hold the superintendent accountable for those goals, which means you've got to report on them now and then. I know you do. Then you've got to find, make sure your budget aligns directly to your priorities. And I can see in your budget statement that Dr. Garcia shared, you've got them. You already built those things in. None of that really was in place, in my estimation, 2011. Those fundamental foundation pieces weren't there, so it's hard to build the future when the things were still shaking. So I want to leave you with the idea that, and I don't mean this as a gratuitous comment, but you've got the hard work now kind of in place. Things are moving. You've got the trajectories turned. Your children will benefit if you can find a way to keep the community engaged, convince people that money's being invested well, and stick to a strategic... Strategic plans are a wrong word, because it's too complicated. Just stick to a vision, mission, and measurable goals that you can hold yourselves accountable for, so you can proudly boast about your performance in a way that's based on evidence and not just based on people feeling better about each other. Because feeling good and working together is not what the job's all about. You want to feel good and work together cooperatively to a better end for children. That's what this is all about. And I appreciate the fact that you opened this evening up with open comments, not afraid to share about your strengths and the board's responsibilities, and I felt you were fully engaged all the way through, so I really enjoyed being here. I can't say enough how much I respect the work you do as board members, superintendent. I know we do a lot of work as superintendents, but board members are kind of below the radar oftentimes. And a place like, an urban system like this, where occasionally the clients you're serving are not represented in the power structure enough, that's one of the challenges of all these communities. It's changing. You're changing that in a way, and that's kind of what the buy-in's part about. Because my experience prior here was that there was the power decision-makers and then the children of the community, and they just seemed like they were in different places. Now it seems like they're coming together in a more realistic way, which I think is a really strong step in the right direction. So I'm really glad I was here, and I'm glad to meet all of you and hope that helps cheer Dr. Garcia down in the future.
I'll be seeing you in a couple of weeks. Again, I'll be seeing you in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, you'll see me a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you. In closing, is there... I'd just like to use a technique that I like to use in meetings a lot, is just quickly go around the room and have each person say if there's something that they really appreciated about this workshop, and if, you know, moving forward, if there's something they'd like us to work more on. So as the chair, I can work with the superintendent to make sure we do that. So who wants to start? Something you appreciated and something you'd like us to keep working on. Anybody? John?
I think using the term staying in your lane is a great way for everybody to understand, unless you've got Toyota that tells you where you're going. Other than that, I think that's a great, easy concept to go by and stay within it. And again, I think, you know, we all drift away. It's... I'll say it's like a baseball player. He gets into, you know, he gets into a hot streak, and the baseball looks like it's a softball or a big or a beach ball, and there's times that there isn't. It seems like they need to regroup and every six months reevaluate where they are. And I think that's a great way to be. It all brings us back down to earth, if that's in a sense.
Okay. Jaime has the same thing.
I particularly noticed, you know, the need for respect and trust, because I think respect is really the foundation for anything that we do collaboratively. Once you lose that respect, it's very, very hard to come together to achieve the goals that we need to achieve. So that struck me, that it was mentioned, and I really, I have always lived by that principle, respect.
So that's something you think we need to work on?
I think so.
Okay. I'm taking notes. Is there anything you particularly appreciated about it, about the workshop, Jaime?
Just, you know, reflect on it. I just would ask everyone, every member of the board, to reflect on respect.
Okay.
And it's a two-way street, right? You respect, you receive respect.
Anybody else?
I certainly appreciate your taking the time to spend with us, and I also appreciate the fact that you've got some history with the district, so that context is helpful. And I like the focus on characteristics of an effective board, because that's what we aspire to be. And in terms of where I hope we go with some of this, it's... There is so much stuff going on and so many things happening that it's easy to get lost in the detail. And from time to time, we need to back up and look at the larger picture. One of the things here, I think, you know, of your eight things, I think the one that we're weakest on is operational issues compared to focusing on policies to improve student achievement. Because the operational issues are in front of us all the time, and it, you know, each one of them is something that needs to... And ultimately, many of them do impact student achievement, but getting a... Standing back and saying, okay, what are the things that we can do that will have the biggest impact on improving student achievement? It's, I think, a question that we ought to stop and ask ourselves probably a couple of times a year.
Okay. I know we're getting up to nine, but I don't want to cut anybody off, so who else hasn't spoken or would like to speak? Tracy?
I'm fine.
You're fine?
Thank you.
Suzie, anything?
I think what struck me the most as well was about, when you mentioned about open communication, I think that's really important, because sometimes things happen, and then you... It builds up. Instead of... I like the idea about the informal meetings, and this way, if anybody has anything to say, they can get it out, and not let it fester and build up, and you're going to a meeting and thinking about what happened, you know, that wasn't to your liking. So I think that's important. I think as a board, we should have informal meetings, we should talk amongst the team and get out anything that we have inside of us that we want, you know, we want it to be known, so we can have better communication. You know, it's like, let it go and move on.
Anything you want to say, Aldo?
Well, I, too, that's my number one thing here, communication between the board, between not just the board and the superintendent, but the board members. I like the communication. What I took from this is that today, we actually communicated. We communicated harmoniously today, and thank you for that. Thank you for bringing that here, and I hope we can continue to do that. And I, too, would like to adopt that, you know, maybe once a month, just have a little, have like 30 minutes before, just a venting session or something.
But we can't do that, that's illegal.
We can't do that.
Well, perhaps...
What Dr. Villanova was referring to is that he met individually with superintendents, new superintendents, not had boards meet surreptitiously.
Twice a year, twice a year, you had an executive session with the board and the superintendent to sort of...
Yes.
How are things going, a check-in. We cannot have informal sessions just to talk about whatever we want to as a board.
It's against the law, it's against FOI.
It's, yeah.
Okay. Good to know.
Anything else anybody want to add? I want to think... Do you want to add anything?
Well, I just want to thank you for coming tonight. I think I really appreciate it. And I do want to say to the board, it's my commitment to work with this board and for the students. When I interviewed for the position, I remember telling this board that I believe that the superintendent and the board is a leadership team. It's one team. It's not two teams. It's not the board is a team and the superintendent is a team. I think it's one team together, and tonight, again, I'm going back reflecting about how we can work together to move the school district forward. I really liked that, hearing that this district had made progress, because I know that this district has a lot of potential. I still have that report from 2011. I carry it with me sometime, and I read it to make sure that we look into those things and that we're moving forward. So thank you, Dr. Villanova, for coming.